Public hearing will come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cadim.
Here.
Dionne. Kilby.
Here.
La Liberty.
Here.
Palatier. Carrera.
Here.
Raposo.
Here.
Washington.
Here.
President Kamara.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. We have item number one before us. Bob's Place LLC doing business as Straight Shooters Billiards, 30 Front Street for permission to maintain a pocket billiard room with 24 tables located at 30 Front Street on Lot K slash 03 slash 001 on the assessors' plan. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents at all? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Any opponents to this public hearing?
Motion to close. Second.
On the motion, Counselor in seat three, I mean, seat five, Counselor Palatier.
My five or six, I forget.
Five.
Five, okay.
My fault.
Are they closing down the Straight Shooters on the Avenue? Is this a move?
Yeah, it was blocked.
It is a move?
It was blocked.
They're going to relocate, I believe, Counselor.
The front street, is that a mill? Do we know?
I don't know. Do you want to put it to a committee, Counselor, and get some answers?
You're asking them, I guess, to move, and, I mean, they should come down. I mean, you know, we're not going to kill anybody.
He's here.
Oh, we got somebody up there, mister?
So, yeah, I call proponents. You want to come down now?
Yeah.
Okay, come on down, please.
Yes.
Could you please give your name and address for the record, and Counselor in seat five?
Robert Albin, 487 Baker Street, Fall River.
So I guess the question is, are you going to relocate to this new location?
Yeah, relocating down the street, about a half mile on Front Street.
Half mile down the street? Is that a mill?
It is a mill. That big, long mill behind Burger King.
Oh, yeah.
They're doing storage. They bought, uh...
Yeah.
...offbeat, uh, Chicago bought it. It's all storage now.
Well, that had a lot of interest because we were there for about, uh...
Thirty-one years.
Seven years at...
Yeah, you were before us.
At the bar one. You're the guy who bought it?
Right, yeah.
I never went there since.
Yeah.
But I don't play fool anyway, but, uh, a lot of memories, but that's okay, too. So you had, you had to move.
We had to move. Thirty-one years we were there.
And the whole building's going to be storage?
It's all storage.
Wow.
Last one there is Cotters, and they got about a year left.
And they're going to get out as well.
Yeah, they're going to get out. So all that entertainment is gone from, uh, back in cages to Laser Gate, all left.
The dancing place, everything's gone.
Dancing, dance studio.
Yeah. All right, I just wanted a little more information. I appreciate it. Good luck.
Thank you.
Counselor in seat six, Counselor Pereira.
Thank you. I was just going to add that I know that they have sold the building, but that Straight Shooters has done a great job there. You have a lot of leagues that go on.
Yes.
There's never any problem there.
No.
You serve liquor there as well.
Beer and wine.
Beer and wine, and there was never a problem with that.
No, no.
And I know you have, um, usually something in the, around Christmas time.
Yeah, we do a fundraiser for St. Vincent's, yes.
Uh, for St. Vin... So I think that's great. I've been to the fundraiser. I'm not a good pool player.
You've been there, brother.
Yeah, well, you have to say what hole it's going into, and me, anyone counts. I'm not really good at that.
Yeah.
But good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
I'm glad that you found a location in Fall River to move to.
It wasn't easy.
No, but thank you.
No, thank you.
With that, I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
You can have a seat now. Thank you.
Thanks.
All set?
Yes, you're all set. Thank you.
Motion to close hearing. Second.
Motion to close the public hearing has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Raposo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing is now closed.
Motion to adjourn public hearing, second.
Motion to adjourn the public hearing has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Cadim. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to... Public hearing is adjourned. Take it six o'clock now?
It is six.
City Council Committee on Finance come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cadim.
Here.
Dionne.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
La Liberty.
Here.
Palatier.
Yeah.
Carrera.
Here.
Raposo.
Here.
Washington.
Here.
President Kamara.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Before we begin finance, the number of individuals have signed up. For citizens' input time, everyone has three minutes. First to come before us, I believe the individuals want to come down together. Mr. Dismaris and Mr. Ferrera. Excuse me? Gentlemen, want to come down, please? Subject matters, please, hiring and retention. Just state your name and address for the record, please, gentlemen.
Yeah, my name's Jonathan Ferrera, 685 Pleasant Street.
Edmund Dismaris, 685 Pleasant Street. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, first, I want to say, uh, I'm the president of the Patrolman's Association. Officer Dismaris is the vice president. On behalf of the union body, uh, we're here to talk about retention issues. So we were very excited when the city council reached out to invite us here. The reason we're speaking to you before that issue comes to you is we're under the impression that this motion might be, this, there might be a motion to table this. We are at critical staffing levels, right next to those of when there were massive layoffs in the city. We don't believe now's the time to kick this can down the road and wait another month or longer. Uh, there was some talk that there's possibly a 150E violation in regards to contract issues. There is none. Um, it's, it's on the ground rules. We spoke into our attorney. We're even willing to go into executive session to talk about this issue. This is nothing that we feel should be held off and wait to the new year. Uh, this issue has to be dealt with immediately. This should have been dealt with prior, but we're happy that we're here to address it tonight, uh, and we're hoping that this doesn't get tabled for a later issue.
What we're asking, Counselors, is we're asking you for the same opportunity that this council offered Chief Garvin back in June, when we actually were in negotiations. Counselor, uh, Cadim, you asked him questions directly about staffing. He provided you an answer, that there was no mass exodus, there is no staffing issues, that if people want to leave, they should be allowed to leave. We need to address that because that is not correct information. Our department is in a crisis. We need it addressed immediately. If it's concerned, if the council is concerned about going into 150E violations, I assure you, we will not discuss anything that's on, uh, negotiation table, although there is an MOU, um, that we have. As we speak, we will not speak on any of those issues. So that way you'll be safeguarded. We will discuss it openly. If you do want to discuss those items, we can go into executive session and discuss those. But our ground rules are very clear as to what we can and can't talk about, and we're here to talk about what we can talk about, and that is staffing and safety at the Fall River Police Department.
We, we were under the impression that we were being called to, we could all work together. We don't know at what point this became, uh, us versus you, or us versus them. We all have the same issue here. The Fall River Police Department, their, our levels are critically low. That affects the safety of the citizens of Fall River and the safety of the police officers. So we want this addressed immediately. Again, we're, we're not here to, to go on the defensive or, or point fingers. We're here to work with the city council, with the chief, with the city to fix this problem, to address the problem. This in no way is, 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 we're not trying to be defensive or point the finger, as I said. We're trying to work to solve this massive issue that we're dealing with right now.
We don't, we don't want the union's voice quelled. And there was some serious, serious conduct today leading up to this meeting. Once it was discovered that the union received an invite and would be here to speak, there was some, uh, action to stop us from coming and to hear our voice. And we don't want the union's voice to be quelled. We want it to be heard. We want our voice to be heard by you and the public. I think it's an important issue.
Gentlemen, because I just want to say that I don't think this is us versus you or the departments. This council wants to work together with you. That's why you're here. The council president, uh, Counselor Pereira filed a resolution. She, I asked who you wanted to invite. She said she wants to invite you people as well as the chief. So that's why you're here. The only thing that I see is that the contract hasn't been signed yet. This came up the last city council meeting, so I put it on this agenda for today thinking that we could talk about it. But it doesn't do any harm to wait another two weeks or three weeks to have this discussion. You will be right back at this table. Everyone will be here the same. I just don't want to jeopardize anything. And I know you say, you promise we're not going to touch and walk the fine line, but you don't know what's going to happen in this council meeting. The council might say something that is not in what we should be doing.
So, um, I mean, with that concern, President, um, we're not going to, we're not going to address, we are not going to discuss anything that's in contract negotiations. You say wait two weeks?
Correct.
How do we know if a contract's going to be signed in two weeks?
Correct.
President?
So, so we don't.
Counselor President, it feels as though what's happening, I think, is, it's almost as if the city is compelling and forcing the union to engage in a contract settlement just so our voice can be heard.
Yeah, see, that's, and that's unfortunate because this was a, a, um, a, a resolution that the council put forward.
Yes.
And I put it on the agenda. Administration had nothing to do with this. I just put it on today's agenda because I felt that we had a light agenda. We could put it on for this discussion to get the ball going.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with anyone signing or not signing or nothing. But since the contract hasn't been signed, I don't think it's right for us to go down and have this meeting prior to that contract being signed. And it might take another two years. So if that's the case, you have, you have plenty of time to negotiate and do what you need to do without this council interfering in any way, shape, or form. That's my only concern. I hope you will respect that.
President?
Because it's all, we didn't, I didn't speak to any administrator before I put this on the agenda. City, police department, anyone. I spoke to the council prep, to Counsel Pereira, who put this in and asked who she wanted to invite, and I invited the chief and the administration. It was not done with anyone trying to do anything, get any contract signed immediately, or if it takes five years. It's up to you people to negotiate and decide what is in both your best interests.
Yes, sir.
And that's what we're here to do, try to help you get to that point. And I think it's safer if we just wait.
Uh, one, one question.
Please.
We've been in contract negotiations since April.
Mm-hmm.
In June, these exact questions were asked to the chief while we were in negotiations. Why now, when the city wants to address these issues, do we need to wait?
It was...
That's our question.
It was, because back then, we were in budget hearings, and the chief came down to, to talk about his budget. So that question comes up. It's come up, and every year I've been at a council pretty much, when people talk about retention and hiring police officers, to not only the chief, but to every department head. That's a major concern citywide. It's not malicious to try to sway you one way or another. That would be a normal question that anyone would ask the chief or any other department head. How are you doing hiring people? We asked to tell every other, a lot of other departments that were here, how are you doing retaining people? And they all said, not just that department, but other departments, public works. They're leaving like, uh, by droves. That we can't, have a tough time hiring people. We need licensed people. So there's a lot of things that go into it. That wasn't a specific question Mr. Cadim asked, just to pinpoint the chief against the union or vice versa. He just asked a question he would ask other department heads.
I didn't imply that, President. I didn't imply that. I just...
So it wasn't, it wasn't a malicious intent. And again, I, I, I respect what you're saying and respect what you're doing here. I would hope you'd respect the fact that we want to err on the side of caution. And if it takes two weeks, or two months, or three months, or six years, who knows? Because only you people will decide with the administration, with the contract negotiations, how long it's going to take. We're trying to help you. We want to help you as much as possible.
Counselor President, you're saying if, if we don't get a contract signed in two years...
I'm not, I'm not saying anything.
This isn't going to be addressed for two years?
No, I'm not saying anything like that.
Point of, point of order. I, I think we're already on a thin line here.
I agree.
Yes.
Yeah.
We really, really are. So we have to take a step back and pause from this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes.
It's, uh, I don't think it's appropriate to have a back and forth about union negotiations at this, this point.
So, gentlemen, I appreciate you coming down.
I totally agree. I'm sorry, Mr. President. I totally agree with, uh, the possible, uh, you know, uh, executive session, uh, period. But, um, at this point, I think we're already on a fine, a fine line in terms of talking about issues that our body, uh, we're crossing lanes. And Counselor Cadim in seat one says this many, many times in terms of staying our lane, so...
So, I mean, I mean, the council...
I don't want to go back and forth.
No, no, no.
Gentlemen, I just want to say one more thing.
The council is not held to the 150E. We are.
Right.
Okay, we are in city administration. You are not as a council. It is the council's role, right, to, to, to listen to the body, listen to the administration, listen to the unions within your city about issues. You've, you've asked the administration in June. You've, you've got a response. We are now at a point where you had to ask for a public hearing. Why would we not pursue that public hearing? Why all of a sudden is that public hearing now not going to be discussed around the table? Why all of a sudden that the union's been invited, that, that meeting is being shut down?
It's not being shut down.
Okay.
It's being postponed.
This is the fine line. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, I, I do want to say, I did say at three minutes, I gave you more than three minutes each.
I yield.
I appreciate you coming down. I respect it, and I understand exactly what you're saying.
And I think you're...
Hopefully, we can work this out. Thank you.
You're right. Everyone's going to understand that. We totally support you. Big time.
We don't feel it.
Totally.
We don't feel it. I, I appreciate you saying that because we don't feel it. I appreciate it. I appreciate you saying that, Counselor.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor in seat one, Counselor Cadim.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just, I guess, to on record, I, I would support a conversation to discuss about, um, retention and, and staffing levels. But I'd also, um, I guess, support putting it off for at least a week. I know we're going to be here next Tuesday for, is that, are we scheduled for next Tuesday?
We do have a special meeting for Tuesday, Counselor.
So I, I think it might be, it might make sense just to have one topic on there and just have the staffing and retention, um, discussion on. But the reason I'd, I'd put it off is because I'd actually put an executive session item as well, just in case we've run that fine line where, uh, if we feel like we need to go into executive session because now we're talking about deploying of, uh, police officers, things of that nature, then we can go into executive session. Uh, but I think the general public, and it should start off in, in open session to talk about, you know, just obviously what the staffing and, uh, retention is. Because across, across the, uh, the Commonwealth, there's, there's issues. Uh, and it's not just unique to Fall River, which is why I asked the question, especially with police reform. Uh, we've got, we've got a lot of different dynamics taking place where off, uh, you know, the, the profession is taking a hit, right? And, and people that have been in the profession for a while are, are looking for a, for an exit strategy, and we're also having a difficult time recruiting folks. So I recognize that. I just want to know where we stand, uh, from a city in terms of what's the plan going forward? Do we have issues? What we can do? Um, but I, I would agree with what you said and what my colleague in seat three said, that we've got to err on the side of caution. So we're not, we're not negotiating, right? So it can't be any collective bargaining strategy, anything of that nature.
Correct.
But the conversation should take place in open session and then move into executive session. And there's nothing here for us to go into executive session because, like, I can see us going down that road.
They won't be at the next meeting as well, Counselor, because that's a special meeting. There's only a city council meeting. Special meeting is not in finance. This is in finance. And I just want to point one thing out. I know both yourself, Counselor Cadim, and Counselor Kilby were former school committee members, quite frequently going into executive session. Twenty-six years I've been in this council chambers, Counselor Palatier, Counselor Pereira can tell you as well, we've never gone into an executive session on any subject.
Yeah.
We do most of our business in the public's eye so they can say anything. I, for one, understand why the school committee does it because you do enter negotiation with contracts.
Employment contracts.
So it's different. This body doesn't do that. We don't have that rule. So we, I have, I am not a fan of going to executive session with these type of issues.
Yeah, so I just, I disagree with you on that, on that standpoint, that there are ten reasons for us to go into executive session. One of them is to discuss the deployment of security and safety measures in the, in the, in the city. So we, we can absolutely go into executive session. I think the reason we don't go...
I didn't say we couldn't, Counselor. I just said we never have.
Right. And, and I think the reason for that is, is because most of the reasons for going into executive session are employment-based, and we're a legislative body. That's, that's the only reason. So...
Correct.
I would say that we should, we should still have that executive session, uh, item on the agenda, just in the case, you know, we go down the road and, and we start talking about deployment of, of police officers, things of that nature. We shouldn't be having those conversations in public. We should be having those behind closed doors, and that's just an opportunity to make sure that nobody understand, understands the strategy or the strategy isn't released to those people that shouldn't know what the strategy is. That, that's the only reason for that.
Thank you, Counselor.
With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Counselor in seat five, Counselor Palatier.
You know, here we are. We've got 45 minutes to kill, and we want to hear a little bit of what they got to say. I mean, we can move it a couple of weeks down or whatever, but you said it may take six months, it may take two years, who knows? But, you know, everybody's here. Uh, you know, they, they're gonna follow, I guess, a closed line, make sure they don't say anything out of the way, and us, too. But it's like, uh, okay, so we got 45 minutes? We can't listen to them for 45 minutes?
Counselor, it's, it's the will of the council. I'm just suggesting, you know, we, we don't have to do, we can, we can hear it out if you will. It's a council wants to.
To hear a little bit about it, so that's my feelings.
All right, we can discuss it as soon as...
And then, like you said, maybe it's going to be, uh, second week of January, or it may be the end of January, and maybe July. But they're here tonight. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat four, Counselor La Liberty.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to reiterate what Counselor in seat three said, that this isn't an us versus them. Um, this is the first I'm hearing of any action to stop the union from coming down. I think we all share in, um, your concern, Counselor Pereira's concern, who put the resolution in. We all recognize the, the fact that, um, we have an issue with hiring, with retaining officers, and it is a safety issue for the residents and also for the officers. So, um, this body absolutely has been in executive session at least two or three times last term with the police department.
Like I said, Counselor, not when I said.
I'm, I'm speaking. I'm just saying, we, we have been in with the police department. So that is something we can do. We do have to be mindful of, um, crossing the line, but I, I also agree with the Counselor to my, my left. We, this is the only item on finance, and, um, we invited people here for a reason to speak about this. And, Counsel President, if you think it's crossing the line, you're, I'm sure you will absolutely say something, but, um, I think we should, would at least owe a discussion on things that we can speak about. With that, I yield.
If that's believable with the council, that's perfectly fine. Counselor in seat two, Counselor Dionne.
Yeah, I would make a motion to, uh, hear what they have to say about this.
We're still, we're still in citizens' input time. There's other people going to speak. So we can save that motion for, we can have, finance is coming up next. So as soon as we're done with this, this, we can just entertain it.
So, basically, I'm just saying, from my point of view, we pursue it. We listen to whatever, what deals with staffing levels. Don't cross the line. Don't discuss what we can't discuss. But at least, everybody's here.
That's fine.
At least give them the opportunity to, to, to speak. And with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Jeffrey Gudrow. Subject matter. Use of ARPA funds.
Can you all hear me? Hello. Hope everyone had a good holiday so far. So I'm, I'm just here briefly to discuss on today's topic on the funds being, uh, discussed tonight, whether to go from the city's fund. So I know that past August, the funds was approved for the Bristol County. However, just recently, it was denied. So the mayor was asking the councils tonight to use city's ARPA funds to use for the youth program. Now, I fortunately did not make my input earlier this summer. I mean, I support youth programs. I support young teens here in the city, as always. I'm not against it. However, I feel the $2 million could be used for something else within the city. I personally believe could be, you know, for the taxpayers and for the home renters could use for water because everything's going up by next year, of course. So, um, I just truly believe that we could use the money used for a little bit more wisely because once the money's gone, it's nothing else to be done with. So I, it was just my opinion, and I do thank you for your time. Thank you.
Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Washington, do you want to...
I just want to clarify something for you. Um, just, there, nothing was denied with the $2 million. In fact, just to give you some information, the money, um, families are calling on massive amounts to say they need this funding. They cannot afford to keep their kids in extracurricular activities, schools, DCF. So, um, instead of waiting months to get these kids, um, the help that they need, we're actually just going to, um, take a vote to move it to a fund that could help them immediately instead of having children wait to get the care that they need. So, I mean, we could take it off the table, but nothing was denied. In fact, they actually loved the proposal, but it's a much, much longer process to help these children in the city of Fall River get the help that they need. So that's just some information, some clarification. Thank you, Counsel President.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Colin Diaz. Subject matter, use of ARPA funds.
Thank you, Counsel President. But before I begin, um, I would agree with Counselor in seat two. Let's hear what the union has to say. We invited the union to come down today. It's on the agenda. The city council is not subject to any union laws or anything like that. I'm sure the union and they know what to say, what not to say. I see no reason why the public can't hear what the, hear about our staffing issues. Um, and I wanted to speak tonight again regarding the proposed ARPA funding today at the $2 million cost of ARPA monies to the taxpayer. And I'm, and I'm not, I'm not against the project. I do want to state that for the record. I'm not against the project. I believe we need to ask the financially pertinent questions when we have a big price tag of expenditures like this, to make sure these services go directly to the nonprofit businesses. And most importantly, we need to make sure that these ARPA dollars are used and intended directly for the youth and the other privilege in our community, which I'm sure the intention was for. My questions are simple. What criteria are going to be used for these nonprofits when they submit their RFP, their application for the funds? Do they have to show a plan to use these funds? Are they going to get the money upfront? Is there going to be a reimbursement process? I understand, um, B.C.E.D.C. uses, um, a reimbursement process when they got their, um, ARPA funding. Um, and I understand from the conversations in August, um, is there going to be a grant director and what will be their salary? I don't think we should be approving funding first and then ask questions later down the road. And I also believe the city council shouldn't even have a role in general of creating grants or proposing grants with grant money. I believe the city council should stick to the checks and balance system that we have between the council and the administration. I think that's most important for the stability of the system. And most importantly, and I think this is more of an issue with the process itself than anything, if the council approves tonight, the ARPA director in, in, in the, in the packet told this city council the project would be forwarded to the ARPA committee. It was said in the letter that it's a requirement. It was a requirement that this project go forward to the ARPA committee. However, the city also holds the position that the mayor has final approval on the sixteen, $60 million worth of ARPA funds, and I think that's contradictory. I don't believe this city has been fully honest and transparent with the community when it comes to ARPA spending. The ARPA committee should stop finding loopholes around the open meeting law and just hold public meetings so there's no question on where these funds go. And I'll end by saying this, as I said before, when the city council maintains its roles of checks and balances and we show fiscal responsibility on the backs of the taxpayer, I think that's when you truly move forward and not backwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor C eight, did you have a quick statement up?
Yep. I just wanted to say, to answer your questions, at any time, you can call the administration office and they'll give you, it's very detailed to go into at Citizens Input right now. But all of your checks and balances and all of your questions can be answered to them. So I would call Kara, the ARPA attorney, and she can give you all the answers to the questions that you have. That's, I yield. Thank you, council president.
I will, thank you.
Next, Nelson Vasquez, subject matter, ARPA transparency.
Hi, Nelson Vasquez, two ten Sunset Hill, Fall River. You know, when former city councilor Peckham was here, I remember him saying that he wanted to record what was going on in one of those ARPA committee meetings. And it was shot down. And then you, you, you fast forward, and we still don't know all the details of what's going on. And since we don't really know what's going on, I think it's actually quite fitting that, I think it's time that we put in an audit to know where every single dollar has gone so far. Because almost seventy million dollars of one-time money that we're never gonna see again and, and the residents of this city don't even know the full story of what's being planned. And we don't even know if money that has already been allocated for whoever is even eligible for that. Because Fall River doesn't want to be on, on the legal end if the feds come down and decide to perform their audit into this money. So I think this council ought to do something and demand an audit into this. Because if Paul has nothing to hide, he'll say, have at it, go ahead. But the fact is, I don't like it how meetings like that are not out in the public view. So that everyone knows what's going on. I mean, it's not asking for much. Because I'm pretty sure if you grab a city resident and ask them, do you know what's going on? They'll tell you, hell no. So I think that's what's appropriate for right now. And, and like I said, if he has nothing to hide, he'll be more than happy to say, have at it. And, and lastly, I just want to say real quick, two things. You know, some N B T A news came down that I will bring out on a future date. And, you know, and in regards to Durfee too, he thinks no one was paying attention when he was on a school committee. And again, if he tries to pull a fast one, the information will come out as to what needs to be appropriated for that line item. Because again, that's a bond that needs to be paid. And we cannot shortchange that debt. Because he'll come back to bite us when he leaves office. So I think when it comes to that, and I'm pretty sure that information will come out, if, if it's not the correct appropriation, check him. Because whatever money's not-
Thirty seconds, Mr. Vasquez.
Yes, Mr. President. Whatever money's not allocated and we owe, the people need to know where that money went from fiscal year twenty-three and going forward. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. There being no more citizens and people for us. Now we enter committee on finance. Call the role.
Mr. President, we are already in finance.
All right. Item number one in finance, discussion, we got hiring and retention of police officers. You want to come down, please, Mr. Corvin and the union representatives that were here, if they want to come down? I'm assuming the council wants to go forward. That's correct?
Yeah, well. I'd say go forward with it till seven o'clock. And if there needs to be further discussion or there's a motion for it to go into executive session, on other issues, we can then do that. But at least let them speak until seven o'clock.
Is there a second tier motion?
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Counselor C day, counsel Washington?
I'm gonna recuse myself, unfortunately, from this meeting, from a perceived conflict. The union president is my brother. So I'm just gonna go in the back. And I will rejoin the meeting once it's over. Thank you.
Gentlemen, please feel free to take a seat at the table again.
The chief's not coming?
Chief, let's take a seat at the table as well.
Yeah, no, everybody can come. I mean, we're gonna work together, right?
Yes.
So let's all get together.
I know the two individuals that have given their name and address early. Could everyone else that has not given their name and address, please give your name and address for the record, please? Starting with you, chief. Can you just give your name and record?
Sure. My name is Chief Paul Galvin.
Edmund Damaris.
Jonathan Ferraro.
Peter DeLuce.
Seth Aiken, I'm the city administrator.
Thank you. May I have the floor?
One second. Mr. Booth, could you give your, what is your title, sir?
I'm a police officer and also the treasurer of the Fall River Police Association.
Thank you. Counselor, in seat six, counsel Pereira.
Okay. The reason that I filed this resolution was, as many of you know, with all my years at DCF and my years at the district attorney's office, I know a multitude of the police officers. And I find that in Fall River, we have some great police officers. And I know that around the country, New York Police Department lost over twelve hundred officers. Some locations are giving ten thousand and twenty thousand dollar sign-in bonuses. Fort Worth, Texas, has a commercial on TV, to be honest with you. Google it. It's like a used car salesman showing the four different vehicles they have. And if you work for them, you could drive all these vehicles, et cetera. But the number one reason for all of the officers who are either switching to a new career or changing to a different department is because they felt unsupported by the community or the department. And that one hit me the most. Because as one of nine city councils here, I have worked with various police officers doing really tough things. And I had nothing but great service from the men and women of this department. And I want to make sure that they know that I do support our police department. And I just want to know, what can we do to retain police officers? You know, are we doing exit interviews? Maybe chief?
Yes. I've, I've done several over the last six months.
And who does the interview?
I do the-
You do the interview?
Yes, correct.
Just a suggestion. Would it be better that Nick, who works here in city hall as human resource person, do an exit interview? Because honestly, if I was leaving the department, if I was a police officer leaving the department, and I had to go and talk to you about why I was leaving, I don't know if I'd tell you the truth. I don't know if you'd get a fair gauge.
I kind of have a, a little bit of an issue with a police officer sitting in front of me, not being able to tell the truth. I understand, like, it might be a little bit intimidating.
Not to tell the truth, but I would be like, ugh.
But it might be a little bit intimidating.
Yeah.
But at the same point, you know, we're having a very candid conversation about why they're leaving. I explained to them very, very calmly that the reason they're there is so that I can understand why they're leaving. That's, I'm looking to help people stay. Unfortunately, they're leaving. I hate to lose someone. But if I can use this so that I can prevent somebody else from leaving, maybe somebody having a better experience here, that's what we're there for.
And maybe then you could speak to Nick about that. I just think that to tell the chief or your boss why, and I know that there's a brotherhood or sisterhood about police officers. So you're a chief in this city, and then there are chiefs in other cities. And, you know, you, you don't want, you don't want that going together. Well, you know, he said this about you, or this one said that, and I really didn't want to tell you the truth. I didn't feel that I could get a promotion here. I didn't, that maybe it is intimidating, you know, for somebody to tell you, or any other chief. Just a suggestion.
Well, for the ones that I, for the ones that I have done, just so you're aware, the ones that I have done, I think people were honest with me.
You think so?
I do. I think maybe, maybe they don't want to tell me some or all of it. But I think everyone hid about all the issues that they had as to why they were leaving.
Now, when a police officer transfers, or if one, let's say that a police officer is going from the police department in Fall River to the fire department in Fall River, they're probably not gonna take out their retirement money. More than likely, they'll keep it there. But we still have to pay them the sick time, vacation time, any comp time that they have on the books. Correct?
Some of that. Some of that, if I'm accurate, right? If they have some time left over, there's some time that they, if they're leaving, they, I don't believe their administrative comp time gets paid out.
How about if they're leaving, let's say somebody goes from Fall River to Somerset or Fall River to Portsmouth. What money would follow that officer? What would they get paid for, he or she get paid for on the way out? Isn't it sick, vacation, and comp?
No sick time, vacation and casual comp time they get paid. Vacation gets prorated for where they are in the year.
For the year. So how much is your budget being impacted by, I mean, how many officers you've had leave? A dozen?
Well, I'll, I'll tell you right now, based on where we are in the budget right now. Last year, we, we were in the red about, this time of the year, about five percent total budget. That's including our personnel. This year, I believe we're the opposite side. I think we're right about even a budget. So we're in really good shape where we are budget-wise.
Now, the, we have somebody that works with DEA in, in the department still?
We did, correct.
We did?
Mr. Damaris, right here. He, he did work there.
But he's not there now?
Correct.
But we get forfeiture money. So if we don't have somebody there, we're not gonna get the forfeiture money. Am I right or am I wrong?
No, you're right. We, once we're not there, we don't get any forfeiture money from the DEA. That's correct. But we still, but we still get forfeiture money from our vice and intelligence unit.
But not from DEA? So just from vice and intelligence, is that it?
Counselor C one, counsel Kadeem.
I wouldn't normally interrupt, but since we put a time limit on this, to seven o'clock, can we just, I don't know how this pertains to staffing and retention. So if we could just-
Because I'm looking at money, like if we're gonna retain people and there's extra money here that we're getting in, if we're paying people-
Counselor, if I could, if I could help you with one thing here?
Sure.
Probably something really unique from my position at this time, right now, as, as a police chief here in Fall River. And I've had this discussion just recently with former chief Jack Souza. During those periods of the previous probably four or five chiefs, they've had thousands of bodies. They've had people on waiting lists. The issue was with budget and money. I'm probably the first chief you're gonna see that has the opposite problem. Is that I have open positions, I have the budget. You people have supported us. You've supported the police department with your budget allocation from the mayor's office. We have the money to hire people. It's something on the other side of it. It's the bodies. We need to hire more.
Do we have people on the list that are ready to come forward to be hired?
Well, funny you say that. This Saturday, and one of the reasons why I was hoping that we would postpone this, because I'll have a better picture for you after this week. Because Saturday, currently, right now, there's an academy that we're looking at in Plymouth. That academy is in the first week of February. Currently, right now, we have twelve candidates taking that physical assessment test. Two candidates on top of that twelve are transferring in from other departments from Rhode Island. And we have one other additional, so that'd be fifteen total. There's one additional employee who's going to patch over from the environmental side. So that's fifteen. That's gonna cut our deficit in half if all of them make it through. Now, additionally with that, we have another fifteen that we're queuing up, hopefully to get into the next academy. Which we don't know if it's gonna be in six weeks or if it's going to be, I believe it's in Randolph in April. So it's one of these things. It's about bodies, good candidates, seats at the academy. We've discussed this, you know, previous budget discussions. But all those things come into play for rectifying this issue. Now, I know you also asked about a particular issue, a particular individual on the list that you, that you've asked about. He's second from the bottom, but he probably will come into play the second time we go through background checks.
Good. Because he's trained and ready to go. And unfortunately, because of an ill mother, he had to move out of Fall River. So it's good to get people back.
Counselor, can I just address-
I'm going to-
Can I address some of that counsel Kadeem asked? The way that this fits with retention issues is Detective Damaris, now Officer Damaris, was pulled from a DEA assignment, which I suggest to get into that is you're going to have to go into executive session to actually understand what it was that Officer Damaris was doing. But the problem is because of retention problems, patrolmen with some with, you know, very few years on the job, were now pulling detectives to cover people in uniform division. That's how it's affecting that. That's why that's a legit issue.
Yeah, I'm just, listen, I'm just a finance guy. So I like the bottom line up front. So I'd like to hear whether or not we have staffing issues or retention issues before we start getting into-
Well, we do.
Detectives and DEA. I'm, I'm ten minutes in and I haven't heard anything that we have staffing issues or-
Would you like to have a number?
No, no, that's what, that's what I want to hear. That's, that's what the point of the schedule was about.
Mr. President, can I just, can I just say this? The only reason I asked about the forfeiture, because I know how much the district attorney's office would get on forfeitures. And I'd like to see us get that because we could use it. However, out of respect to all of my colleagues, I believe that this will probably go into executive session on another night. But I would like to yield to give the opportunity, we said it would go till seven, give the opportunity to my other colleagues.
Counselor, just to-
With that, I yield. Thank you, Mr. President.
And if I may, counsel, because you mentioned about asset forfeiture. I believe in asset forfeiture, and I wish we had more. But with that, I also have to, I have to run the store, okay? And there's priorities of when I move people out of places. In particular, we're hoping that this was going to be a temporary issue. I'm not quite sure how it made it to this level. Because we even told the union and we told Detective Damaris that we're looking for two months. It's gonna be temporary. Now, do the numbers play? I don't know. Will it be longer? Maybe it'll be longer. I don't know. But that's, that's where we are.
With that, I yield, Mr. President.
Counselor C one, counsel Kadeem.
Okay. So staffing levels, do we have an issue with staffing levels? Do we have issues with retention? I guess, can we stop there?
We have, we have, we-
Are you asking a particular individual? Are you asking the chief?
I was, I was asking the chief and then I-
I wish you were gonna meet, counsel.
Sure. We've, we've had this discussion going back to, in the budget discussions, right? We talked about the lack of manpower, the issues that we've had with hiring candidates, numbers of seats, the numbers of academies. These are all things that are in constant play. We're constantly trying to work out.
So in, in terms of, and I guess just to make sure we're, we're staying on our side of, of the House, right? So we're a legislative body. So we, we, we essentially just deal with appropriations, right? So we don't, we don't dictate to the chief or the administration on how the operations of the police department are gonna take place. But what we are concerned about is whether or not you have enough funding, right? And that's why we have those conversations during, during the budget time. So can you tell us where we are from an optimal, I guess, staffing levels and where we currently are? And then how many, I guess, vacancies you have or open positions that you look, that you need to have filled?
Right now, I believe, forgive me, I've been on vacation this week. I believe we're about twenty-five short.
Vacancies?
Correct.
And not, so we haven't done any of the hiring process and not an academy, nothing, just?
That's counting the eight that just came out of the academy. That just graduated on the twenty-third.
May I interrupt? Twenty-five short from what, what year?
I, I, I can't tell you which year and how it rolled into, but we've been going back and forth with this number.
But twenty-five short on the F Y twenty-three budget, right? You've, you've captured all those budgeted lines.
We have twenty-five, we have twenty-five open budgeted positions right now.
In the budget.
Yeah. Okay. And then, so that includes eight that are coming out of the academy. So then they gotta go to field training, which is what, eight, twelve weeks?
Correct. Correct. From academy through FTO, it's approximately, it's almost, I always think of it, it's like having a baby. It's about nine months before they're on their own, doing single service. It's a twenty-two week academy. And, you know, five months, so about five plus months in the academy, then another three months for FTO.
So I, and I recognize the burnout rate, right? Cause I think burnout is, is a legitimate thing, right? So I, I just, from a, from a city council standpoint, if we were to throw money at this, it doesn't, it doesn't rectify the problem in terms of trying to hire people and get people in these positions, right? Cause it's, there's obviously, you've, you've got an issue unless you're telling me something different of hiring people.
Correct. And I think somebody had mentioned it earlier. I mentioned the, the meeting that I was at for the budget. And I'm not quite sure who had the question, but I believe I told somebody. They talked, we were talking about money. One of the councils asked me about money. And I said, counsel, you can give me two million dollars. I need bodies. And that's the problem that we're at. We're just looking to hire more bodies.
So can you just talk a little bit about the, so the civil service, and maybe it was just the promotional exam. There was an issue with the civil service, right? Where they stopped giving the tests for civil service. Has that been rectified? Is that just for promotional exam or is that all of, just promotion?
Promotion.
Okay. So that's not gonna impact-
So just, so, just so we know that our ability to promote and use the civil service system is connected to a bargaining issue. So I'm going to stop and, and say that we probably shouldn't talk about-
Yeah, no, I was just, I was more in line of not the promotional aspects, but just seeing if it was creating issues for hiring folks. I'm not, I'm not part of a civil service community. So we don't have to worry about civil service. I just know that there was an issue going on with civil service.
The issue, the issue with civil service was that there were several tests. And this goes back to, I believe it was a nineteen ninety-nine case. It was two firefighters. I believe it was either Malden or Boston or somewhere north, north shore. And they made an allegation that the testing that was done by civil service for promotions was discriminatory. And the courts finally came back, just recently.
And the courts finally came back, just recently, after all these years, and said it was. And they basically did not give a test this year because of this issue with civil service testing. That case is still being litigated, or the ramifications are still being litigated up at the State House.
So, Chief, through you or even the administrator, in terms of the 25, so if, if we were able to fill those 25 vacancies, does that give you the staffing levels that you feel you need to operate the police department optimal?
So, it's never, it's a, it's a, it's a river. It's constantly moving. You can never think of us as stagnant numbers if you give you 25, because we have 25 openings. But within that 25 openings, I probably have about eight or nine more officers who could retire tomorrow if they, if they chose to do so. I don't think they will, but they could. So, you have to keep that in play. And then on top of that, I may have about four or five more that some may be injured, some be, may be in a, what we call a retirement track. We know that, you know, they're still on the books for a certain period of time, but I know they're going to retire. So, that number is, is going to be a little bit fluid over, over the course of the next year.
Well, that's, I guess that's where I was going to get to.
For safety purposes though, what, what really comes down to is how many men do we have in the street? And that's where, that's really your base bottom dollar number. And we're low, our numbers are lower than, than they have been in the past or at the same level that they have been in the past.
Counselor Kadeem, if I, to add to that, that flow that we talked about, that's, that's forever. That's as long, as long as police has been in existence, the hiring process, retirements, resignations. Let's just look at the last year alone. Last year alone, our numbers, our roster went from 173 patrolmen in January down to 163 in June. We lost 10 just in that six-month period. In February of 2021, Chief Cardoza went public and it's, it's there. Chief Cardoza spoke about the issues we're seeing in hiring. So, the hiring issues have been here. They've been here for at least two years. So, that's not a learning point. That's not something that just creeped up on us. We've been dealing with that or should have been dealing with that for the past two years. Now, we're running into a retention issue, because just in this last year alone, to today, we want to talk about usable police officers. We're down to a net of 145 police officers on the street being able to work. We have 158, eight of them in the academy just graduated. They're going to be in in-service. You have four on leave time, planning to retire. They're using their accrued time to retire. You have five on extended sick leave through injury or personal injuries. And then you have two on admin leave. You want to break that down? It's 145 patrolmen to rely on to service all functions of the police department. Detective services, special operations, school resource, housing authority, patrol. That's where we're at. This didn't just creep up on us. So, in June, to, we were told that there is no crisis. We're fine. Staffing levels are great. And if people want to leave, let them leave. Well, here we are, six months later, and we're running a crisis. We, we, we need this, we need it fixed.
So, do you have, you have any recommendations in terms of how to attract individuals to the city of Fall River or?
Yes, well, you, you just made the comment about it's not something we can just throw money at. Yes and no. I know you're budgeting and, and that's great, but there are, if you look around, someone, Councilwoman Pereira said, this is happening all over the country. So, we look all over the country and we look to see who's doing retention programs. Many of the big departments have figured out we need to somehow do a retention program. And the, the number one thing is the, is financial. That's the biggest thing. And that's also how the, the city would prove it respects our department. How hard are we willing to work to keep our guys? Are we talking to the guys? What is it that they want? So, those, those retention programs are out there. Those programs for new hires are out there. They're all over the place. The, the, the chief, we've spoken before about, with the mayor, about a program for the new hires. It's an incredible program. I wish it was happening 18 years ago when I started. But it's a great program. And that's not a violation, because it's, it's a new hires. It's a way to get them in the door and it is a way to throw, it's basically throwing money at the issue. But it's going to help get guys into the, into the building. So, then we say, okay, once they're in the building, how do we keep them in the building? Well, it's the, almost the same practice, retention. There's, there's many ways to do it. We, in, in an executive session, so everybody can speak a little bit more freely, we have ideas of how we can use those, those issues and those ways of doing it. And however you want to phrase it, throwing money at it or investing in your police department and in public safety, it's the number one way of doing that.
So, how many, how many, how many resignations did we have, did you say, for this fiscal year?
We'll have to add the one that just occurred while we're at this meeting. Somebody turned in their resignation tonight.
So, how many?
Since, since what day?
Just for this fiscal year, since June, July, July 1st.
I have listed. We have a total of... For retirements and resignations, just leaving?
No, because retirement is not really retention, so I'm just trying to get to the...
There's, there's early retirements is, is another retention problem, is you have guys that would normally stay for the 32. We now have guys with 29, 30 years on, like, nope, I'm pulling the report, it's not working.
But I'm looking, if we're going to talk retention, I'm really trying to figure out how many people are actually leaving to go to another department.
We've got six resignations for other agencies. Very local, very local agencies, like neighboring communities that have left since, since the fiscal year. In February of this year, the city received federal funding for hiring and retention, $450,000. This, this month in December, they just received another $550,000 from the state for hiring and retention. You shaking your head, Chief? I mean, if I'm wrong, please correct me.
You're wrong, sir. So, so we did in fact receive $500,000 for hiring and retention. And I think many of you councils are going to understand this, because I know you dealt with this during difficult times. When we put in for this money, we have to specifically state what the money's for, okay? Whether we're hiring for overtime or whether we're using it for salaries, okay? We don't put in for salaries anymore, because if you remember back when we had a bunch of gentlemen laid off, it's because a lot of people were on grants and were on salary. So, what happens if this money's not guaranteed? And God forbid, you know, there, there are some people who are elected officials who are on the Ways and Means Committee. If they lose their position at some point, we may not get that money in the future. So, what happens if we don't lose that money, we won't lose the positions.
So, I'll go back to what I was saying.
I'm not done yet. I appreciate, hold on one second, so.
But I want to talk about putting funding.
I'm not done yet, please.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. All the time, when the gentleman is done, someone else can speak.
Thank you. So, it's about some strategy about when we're applying for this money. It can be used for retention, to pay for salaries. It can't be used for, you know, to give money for incentives or benefits at this point, from my knowledge. But right now, the money that we were earmarked was specific for overtime occurrence. Thank you.
Okay, so as I was saying, the, when the chief indicated I was wrong, that the funding that came through is able to be utilized for hiring purposes. How that money is utilized for hiring, whether it's an incentive or to pay for costs associated with that hiring? Because right now, we have potential candidates in this city that if they want to come on this police department, they have to pay for the entrance exam, civil service, $150. They have to pay for physical agility's test. They'll have to pay for psychological exams. They'll have to pay for khaki uniforms to go to the academy. They'll have to pay for uniforms to go to the academy. It's, it costs roughly about $9,000 out of a potential candidate's pocket to become a police officer. That is where that money can potentially be spent, is on that equipment to cover the, the cost of that, to get people to come on. When I came over from, I came over from the sheriff's department 15 years ago. I got a severance package leaving that department of $10,000. I spent $9,000 of that to take this job, paying for all the equipment, paying for the academy. Because we, the city pays for the academy upfront, but the candidates pay it back to the city. Covering those costs is an incentive. That's a hiring incentive. So, when we say throw money at it, that is what we mean by throw money at it. Cover some of those expenses. And you're going to, you're going to get a lot of people who are in a tough financial situation, but are going to be great police officers, because they grew up in this city, they'll apply for the job, because they, they know they won't have to come up with that much money. That's a hiring incentive. Retention, we can talk about that at a later time, because that I think is executive session. I think that is getting into muddy waters as far as our MOU. I don't want to discuss that. But as far as hiring, and the hiring issue's been around since, we know, for the last couple of years.
Yeah, listen, if that, if that's one of the suggestions I come forward from, from the administration to look for some additional funding for that, then I'm all in favor of that, right? Because I think we've got to be competitive. We're trying to get folks to, to get their foot in the door, because they're looking elsewhere. There are other communities doing it, which I don't always agree with, right? I don't, I don't agree with the signing bonuses and things of that nature. So, I personally wouldn't support that. But if you're telling me, you know, putting some money for expenses that are associated with going through the academy and, and things of that nature, then, then I can support that if it's a one-time, you know, payment and we can, we can fund that. So, you know, those are, those are good conversations in terms of the hiring. In terms of the retention, Chief, you, you talked about doing the exit interviews and this will be my last question, so my other colleagues can ask some questions. But is there any, were there any topics that you think are important to be shared with the city council that we can address as a legislative body to, to help retain?
To be honest with you, the, the reasons were varied across the board. There were some, I think one person had mentioned they were going to make a bit more money and they were going to do less work. They were going to take less calls. It was a quieter community. One person had mentioned off the top of my head that they were being promised that they were going to be a hostage negotiator. And this person had maybe just a year on the job. That's what they were being promised. And they also felt that in Fall River, we do urban policing and we're tied to 911 system, that go, 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 that they wanted to have more time to have an impact with people in a community when they go on calls. So, it's kind of been a little bit, a little bit of a smorgasbord, if you will.
Okay, with that, I yield for now.
Thank you, Counselor.
He was saying something.
Yeah, just, so, we don't have, as a union, we don't have exit interviews, but we certainly talking to our guys when they leave. And I understand where y'all coming from with the exit interviews, having somebody else do it. I also understand the, the chief's concern about having somebody else do it. But overwhelmingly, when our guys have left, it's been for financial reasons. And I understand maybe they don't want to speak to the chief or, or they're going to another department. They're concerned that something's going to be said if they leave and say something off color, which I don't believe the chief would do. I don't think he's going to call the other departments, say, "That guy just swatted me on his way out the door." I don't think that's going to happen. But I believe there's reasons why guys aren't going to be 100% honest. And it's been overwhelmingly financial. Counselor Kadeem said exactly. We are not close to competitive with police departments our size.
Thank you. Just, can I just ask one thing?
Counselor, 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 Counselor Dion has the floor.
Oh, I just wanted a clarification.
I called, you can get, if you want to clarify something, that's fine, just a clarification.
The clarification I had, when you said that there was 145 officers, that's detectives, this, that. How many of those 145 street, on the street, ground, first, second, third shift officers?
So, those are all the patrolmen that are filling all, all of the positions? That, that's filling detective positions, patrolman positions, school resource officers, housing unit. That's covering all, that's how many patrolmen we have. That is not counting the supervisors. You have supervisors.
No, I just thought 145. I just wondered how many, if you're not a detective or you're not a, an SRO or whatever. How many uniform on the street in a car?
So, I don't have that specific number for uniform division total, but it's, it's going to be roughly about 75 to 80 of those in uniform division.
Okay, that's the only question that I had, because I know people are called in overtime or whatever and they need to decompress to go back out again. That's a concern.
And that also, right, what you're saying is because of the retention issue, the amount of, not necessarily overtime, but the forcing in is, is probably the second biggest issue is our officers, most of our officers in uniform division haven't seen two days off in a row all year long, because they're getting forced in at an astronomical rate. So, they're getting burnt out, as, as Counselor Kadeem said. It's, it's, it's true. It's, the numbers are so drastically low.
Which goes towards retention. I mean, it's, it's a burnout period for patrol, for the uniform division specifically.
I, I want to...
Counselor C. Two, Counselor Dion.
Yes, I want to direct that, our city administrator. So, ARPA funding, the city was given $10 million for hiring, retention. I can't think of the exact name of the category. There was $10 million. We still have $8 million in that fund or that portion of it. You know what I'm talking about?
Are you talking about the lost revenue, Counselor?
The lost, yeah, I believe so, the lost revenue, right. So, can't some of that, couldn't some of that ARPA funding be used for, for what they're talking about? To pay that $9,000, because you're, we've lost people? So, now you're rehiring. Isn't that specifically what some of that money was meant for?
So, and hopefully the rest of the folks at the table will bear me out on this. For the last couple of weeks, even months, there has been an ongoing conversation about that $9,000 to $10,000 chunk that every new recruit would be responsible for. And if there's a way we can cover that, start it off as almost like a loan. And maybe if there's, you know, a commitment of a couple of years serving the city of Fall River, it then becomes a grant. It's forgiven. There's a number of ways to do it and that, that's just one idea that's been floated. Would you all agree that we have been talking about this?
Correct, yes. That's, yeah.
All right. I just, you know, I want to at least make sure you know that we're thinking about these things and that the chief has, has been working well with the union and we've been trying to, to come up with some solutions. Certainly, the lost revenue could be a way to do that, because as you know, no other ARPA funds can be used for actually salaries or those sort of things.
Right.
There's not only that money, but there's, there's certainly other ways we can look at paying for that. But it's, I will say it's a priority right now. It, it, to me, seems to be the, the low-hanging fruit of this problem. It's something that we can address in, in a fairly immediate way, and I think it would make an impact.
And I, I mean, I do agree with the fact that if, if the city makes the commitment and pays that money for new recruits so that they don't have to bear that expense, that there should be a commitment on the part of the recruit as well. I mean, you don't pay for the, you know, put out $9,000 and then in nine months, they walk out the door and go somewhere else. So, I absolutely would agree with that, whether it be two, three years even. I mean, we have till 2026 to expend those funds. So, you could put a three-year time line on it and, and still be within the parameters of how that money is to be spent.
Certainly.
And, yeah, that seems like that would work well. That's basically what that money was intended for.
Exactly. I think it, it could have a great impact for perhaps one of the most important issues we have facing us in the city.
And it doesn't affect anybody's budget. It doesn't affect the general budget. It doesn't affect the chief's budget. It's available funds that we can put to good use.
So, part of the issue is, is that's great, we got them in the door. So, now we have to deal with the retention issue. Because we'll, those officers that are resigning, we're losing great officers. And, and, and again, Councilwoman Pereira said it, our, our offices in this city are great. We have, we, I, we, you know, being part of the union and, and part of the SWAT team, we go out all the time. We talk to other departments. I'm confident we have the best officers around. We really do. And the fact that we're, the fact that we're losing at such rate is heartbreaking. We have the best, they're sitting here right here. That's the support we get. These, our guys are showing up on their own time to prove to you this is a big issue. We have the best officers, the best trained ones. And they're going to somebody else's department. They're taking all the good training here, all, everything good they learned, and they're bringing it to another department. Good for that department, not so good. So, now we have to, when a, when a guy leaves five years, it's all that experience, all that knowledge. The, the amount of time, as the chief said, not just nine months, the experience that that officer hopefully gets the same as that other guy. These are great officers that are leaving, okay? I just want to make that clear.
But at least if you start with getting them in the door.
Get them in the door.
Get that money upfront, so it's not a burden to them. And then you've got a three-year commitment where you can work on the retention issue.
We got to keep the ones that are here, and that's what we're saying. We worked with the chief and the mayor and, and that sounds, hopefully this, this program comes through. But it's the guys that are here now, we need to keep.
Absolutely.
I agree. I think every city council agreed with you. I just want to point out something. Excuse me one second, Counselor. We are now approaching the seven o'clock time. I'm letting Counselor Dion finish her questioning, but when she's done, we're probably going to have to make a motion to do something with this, because we said we'd do it till seven o'clock. Counselor Dion, please continue.
No, I was only going to finish with you. I mean, you can't be constantly backfilling, 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 because it's like treading water and never making it to the shore. I mean, you're right. You have to work on retention issue for who's here. Maybe we can use those funds to get the new ones in the door. Maybe we can use those funds to get the new ones in the door. You get the three-year commitment. You'll use the retention program for those people, and hopefully, we can build up your numbers. I mean, public safety's number one. If, if you're, because it's not just, it's not just the citizens. You, as an officer, also need to be safe on the street, and if you don't have enough officers to back you up, you're at risk.
I, I, I think a good thing that will help retention right now at this time as well, a major thing is, uh, the men and women of this department feel as though they have the backing of their chief. Um, the, the men and women of this department don't need the chief on public, uh, media, uh, calling his department lazy. Um, and he did that very recently on, uh, Mark Dyan's interview. Um, and that's an impact, uh, to the morale and the working conditions. We can't have that. Um, it, it's, it's out in the public. Public heard it. Um, he said he, uh, inherited a culture of natural soldiering, and he defined that as lazy police officers. That affects retention hugely.
Can I address that, if, if I may? I did use the term natural soldiering, and I said it was about a few police officers. I cleared that up with Council, uh, I'm sorry, with Union President Jonathan, uh, Ferrera, who, when I explained to it, agreed. Agreed that some of the changes that I had to make had to get made. Okay? So, I know it upsets some people that I use certain language, uh, to describe their work behavior. But if you're out there every day, and you're on the line, and you're giving it what you, what, what you have, then you know I'm not talking about you. You know I'm not talking about you. It's the other guy who, you look at the numbers, and you say, there's no numbers here. Why are there no numbers here? Why are there no arrests? Why are there no citations? I have to call it the way it is. That's unfortunate. That's the management position that I'm in. I don't have the luxury of looking for a vote and pandering to police officers for votes for unions. I'm here for the business, not to get the business.
So, I, I just wanted to, I definitely agree with you. The chief did speak about that. Um, and he, he did say it was, he did say he was only talking about a few. I'm not agreeing that, that term natural soldiering was ever the term to use. I'm not pandering to, uh, a union body. I, I don't think there's any type of cowardice or laziness. Uh, I, the, the chief did clear that up with me. But I, I don't agree to that term whatsoever. As I said again, I think we have the best police department around. And I'll stand, I'll go to any call with any of those guys that are sitting up there or in that building anytime, and that's what we do.
I think everyone in this room agrees with you, so...
And I think, and I think really what we need to do is focus and stick to the point. And the retention, the hiring, keeping everybody on track.
Thank you.
And keeping everybody safe. And I think we'll do a lot better that way, because otherwise, we're just, everybody's, we're just gonna end up at everybody's throats, and it's not gonna work out well. Um, with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
I would just say that at this moment, we did say it was gonna go until seven o'clock. But I would say that if this is tabled, that when we come back to this issue, I agree with Councilor in seat number one and seat number four, that perhaps it should be executive session, because there's other issues that I truly feel, um, should be addressed better. Because we want to be able to show the police department that we are here to support you. We do have your back. And I agree with you, um, Mr. Pereira. We do have a darn good police office, uh, in Fall River. We've got great patrolmen. Like I said, I've worked with many of them in rough situations. So, you know you have our back. If there's other issues that are going on, when you talk about money, every single person that works in City Hall wants more money. And every single person that works in, in this city deserves more money, but there's only so much money that the city has. And I would also give kudos to our state delegation.
Councilor, you did stop by saying you know it's seven o'clock.
For our state delegation, and the state senator for getting all that money down. So, sometimes people don't think the state works, or Senator Roderick's works for us. We got more money than any other community, so a shout out to them. Mr. President, I make a motion that we table, and then you make a decision of executive session. With that, I yield.
Can I just put in a request? So, if we're gonna table this to another meeting, can I just ask that recommendations be brought forth? So that at least we're not just talking about this, that we have recommendations from either the police union and the administration as to how they would like to see some of these items addressed in terms of retention and, um, staffing levels? Just, just so that we're not going on and on and on without any real options.
Motion to table has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's tabled. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen, all of you, for coming in, and thank you all for coming.
Motion to adjourn finance.
Has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Finance is now adjourned. Regular city council meeting will begin in five minutes. The regular city council meeting will please come to order. Clerk will call a roll.
Councilors Kadim, Dyan, Kilby, La Liberty, Palatier.
Yeah.
Pereira.
Here.
Propozo.
Yeah.
Washington.
Here.
President Kamara.
Here. Clerk, a moment of silent prayer. Please keep in mind, we just found out that former DPW Director Ron Rehm is passed.
Can we also, uh, reflect on Mr. Nero Faris, please?
And, and also, Mr. Nero Faris, uh, two great men that served this community for a long, long time in many different capacities. Please remain standing for a swift to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit this meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, the first item is a communication from the mayor and an amended loan order for two-point-seven million dollars for the construction and renovation of buildings to be used initially by the EMS department.
Does this require a motion to be published again?
What do I have to publish? Um, and refer to committee on finance would be appropriate motion.
Please.
So made by Council Kilby. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is also a communication from the mayor and the ARPA director regarding the youth, uh, youth initiative funding through the city's ARPA funds instead of the Bristol County ARPA funding.
Motion to adopt.
Motion accepted, place, uh, place on file. May I ask communication? Approve the request? Is that the motion you want to make, Councilor?
Please.
Motion made by Council Kilby, seconded by Council Washington. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have amendments to traffic ordinances from the Traffic Commission.
Motion to refer to committee on...
Refer to committee on ordinance and legislation.
Second.
Motion for committee on ordinance legislation made by Council Dyan, seconded by Council Propozo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have an order for the, uh, billiards license for Bob's Place LLC, DBA Straight Shooters Billiards at Thirty Front Street. Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Council C two, Council Dyan, and seconded by Council C six, Council Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have a number of auto repair shop license renewals.
Motion to approve.
Motion to adopt your auto repair licenses has been made by Council Propozo, seconded by Council Palatier. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And, Mr. President, with your permission, if I could just list the businesses.
Please do.
Thiago Butalho, DBA Mill City Diesels LLC, located at eleven thirty-nine Slate Street. Thomas A. Legault, DBA Tom Legault's Auto Repair, located at sev- seven forty-five Brayton Avenue. And Everett J. Mello, DBA Dave's Tire and Auto Service, located at three twenty-five Bedford Street.
Item number six.
The next item is an auto repair shop license transfer for, um, Jose Baidoun, DBA Baidoun's Auto Repair Company, Inc. The, uh, license is being transferred to Mario Larrero, DBA Mario's Auto Repair and Sales, Inc., and it's at eight thirty Globe Street.
There a motion to adopt?
Motion so made. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. On the motion, Council C five, Council Palatier.
How many cars is he allowed?
Uh, there, I don't believe there's any restrictions on the license, Councilor.
He's only got a lot for about four cars. They're already complaining about cars being parked there.
There are no listed restrictions.
There's none?
Motion to refer.
Don't we usually put restrictions on, not us, but the licenses for them? Some go for ten, twenty, and all that stuff. This guy's got none.
He may for the auto sales portion of it, but not for the repair.
His repair.
Oh, sales guy. That's what I meant. Sales.
This is only for repair.
Oh, just for repairs, okay. Repair and sales. Again, so he's got a license to sell.
He may have a license, but it's through the licensing board. It doesn't come before the council for approval.
All right. I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor C six, Council Pereira.
I've heard some complaints, too, that even though it's for repair, you'll have eight people drop off cars in the morning that need to be repaired, and there's no place for them, um, to park. So, they park in the street. I... I don't feel comfortable voting on this until we find out, you know, what...
Do you want to refer him to a committee, Councilor?
Yeah, I, I think I refer it to regulations.
Second.
Motion for regulations made by Council C six, Council Pereira, seconded by Council C one, Council Kadim. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's referred to committee regulations.
The next item is the police chief's report on licenses. Uh, Mr. President, uh, just as, uh, information for the council, uh, the two taxi license applications that are listed on the agenda for Mr. Mohammed Shabir were disapproved by the police chief.
So, should we separate him from these other two licenses?
You can.
I'll make a motion to separate them.
Second.
Second.
Motion separated has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Would you like to take the first, I want to read the names of all, Madam Clerk, the first one, um, Peter Hadad?
So, the, um...
Cap drivers.
Two thousand thirteen taxi cap drivers, Peter G. Hadad, Laura Rodriguez, and Vicky Yamileth Rosario Rodriguez.
So, we'll take them three. Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt those three made by Councilor C two, Council Dyan, seconded by Council C six, Council Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. What's the will of the council to do with the other one? Do you want us...
Motion to deny.
Motion denied, made by Council C six, Council Pereira, seconded by Council C one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Do you have a number of claims?
Motion to refer to corporation counsel.
Motion for to corporation counsel made by Council Propozo, seconded by Council Washington, I believe, first. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Do you have the zone, uh, minutes from the zoning board of appeals for November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two?
Accept, motion accept and place on file.
Motion accepted, place on file, made by Council C two, Council Dyan, seconded by Council C one, Council Kadim. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item are planning board minutes for November ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Motion accept, place on file.
Adopt, place on file.
Motion accepted, place on file, has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have committee on finance minutes for the city council for December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Motion to adopt, place on file.
There's two, correct? Oh, no. Okay, motion to committee on finance is, is a s...
Second.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We also have minutes for the city council regular meeting, for the meeting held on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Motion to...
Motion to approve would be appropriate.
Motion approved.
Second.
Has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's approved.
And the last item is a communication from, from the Department of Utilities regarding a petition, uh, from National Grid for approval of an alternative basic service procurement and pricing plan with a common period deadline of January sixth, two thousand twenty-three, at five P M.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Second.
Motion accepted, place of file, has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Motion is now adjourned. Have a happy new year, everyone. Please be careful.